Councilmember large president. Councilmember large call.
Here.
Councilmember Torres.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Kine. Councilmember Sedano.
Here.
Councilmember Massa.
Here.
Councilmember Coleman. In the absence of President Coleman, Councilman Grove himself will be acting pro tempore on his behalf. At this point, I would ask us all to rise and ask Councilman Gonzalez to leave. You're placed, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution.
Everyone's had a chance to re-attend it from last meeting at this time before I did. This is a regular meeting of City Council for the City of Elizabeth in convenience. The Municipal Board of Alcohol Beverage Control. Notice of this meeting has been prominently posted on City Hall Volting Board Reserve for such announcements. It is on file with City Clerk and ABC Board Secretary from 106. The City Hall of the City of Elizabeth in New Jersey emails any person upon request. A copy of the annual notice is mailed to the Newark Star Ledger in compliance requirements of the New Jersey Local Public Meanings Act. This time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any ABC matter? If you have an opportunity to want to make a statement, it's now a public speaking. For she to come up and say a few words. The public speaking is now closed. First order of business, motion to approve minutes from the rescheduled ABC meeting held September 23, 2013. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion Councilman Mazza second by Councilman Carlos Sedano, vocal. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Excuse me.
Councilmember Sedano.
Excuse me.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal.
Excuse me.
First item on the agenda is an application for person-to-person transfer from SS Media America, Latco Inc., inactive pocket, planetary retail consumption license with broad package privilege. Number 2004-32-176-012. City license number C-147, formerly located at Terminal A at the North Liberty International Airport, Elizabeth, New Jersey, with mailing address at 19465 Deerfield Avenue Suite 105, Antown, Virginia 20176. License being transferred to Juanette Inc., inactive pocket, planetary retail consumption license with broad package privilege. City license number C-147 to its new mailing address at 22 Rochelle Drive, Kendall Park, Jersey, GO 8824. Corporate structure is Arnett Gruenig, 22 Rochelle Drive, Kendall Park, Jersey, GO 8824. She is the president, 50% of the business owned and owns 2,500 shares. Second member is Wanda Kobita, 731 Oliver Court, North Bronx, Jersey, GO 892, who will be the secretary and treasurer, also 50% of the business owned and owns 2,500 shares. Counselor John Hurdock is the second. Please answer your prayers. You have to get one of these quick.
I would see you. I was saying, let's quickly, John Hurdock, representing the applicant Juanette Inc. This is Arnett Gruenig, she is the president of Juanette Inc.
And it's my understanding at this point in time, the license that's being transferred will be the pocket license. There's no location at current.
Location, yeah.
Members of the board, any questions with the applicant? She filled out an application, a questionnaire, but as you can tell, since there is no location, a lot of the information is left blank. And my understanding is once you find the location where you can place this license, you can be back here as a person. So for now, it's just person-to-person, she'll place it. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I'd just like to make sure in the case here that neither one of the applicants have any experience in the retail liquor restaurant business. Is that correct?
No experience.
I have to say, my name is Martin, I'm from the food hall, sorry, you're smart. You're a citizen.
I apologize. The family's in the food industry, so that is the venue of the owners of the applicant to basically take it to the next step and open up a location with a license.
Where did you work hard to get into this venture?
I had my own business also, seven years ago, that was a hair salon.
Hair salon.
Yes. And I have my own business, food business, catering business.
So you're still on the catering business?
Right.
How long has he been doing that?
Eighteen years.
So he's going to be one of your employees?
Yes.
And your partner is your mom? Wanda's your mom?
Yes.
It's the Juanette that comes from.
Right.
What does mom do?
She's, she's a, she's a.
She's a toy. Does she ever work in the food business?
She helped. It's my, my father also has the business, so.
Your father owns a catering business. Now, just so that, obviously, this is not the end yet, because you're in the back here. I would suggest that your attorney, who is competent counsel here, is going to get you a copy of the ABC manual that's issued by the State of New Jersey Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Should read the rules and regulations. This food business is one thing, certainly alcohol is a totally different animal. Any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve the application person-to-person transfer? It's a motion by Councilman Mazza second, seconded by Councilman Gonzalez, vocal. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmembers Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal. See you next time.
Thanks very much. And Wanda, thank you for putting this in, the city has been very, very helpful.
Try to please.
Yes, no, thank you very much.
Next matter on the agenda is the application for person-to-person transfer. Compass Group USA Inc., trading as President's Club. Planetary retail consumption license number 2004-33-182-012. City license number C-247, located at Terminal A at Liberty International Airport, Elizabeth, New Jersey, to Sodexo Magic LLC. Planetary retail consumption license 2004-33-182-013. City license number C-247, located at Terminal A at Liberty International Airport, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Whole list of corporate structures, so we're one out of them. Irving Johnson Jr., 12 Beverly Place, Beverly Hills, California, 90210. He will be the president, but have no interest in business. Kwanah Brown, 10445 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, 90064. Vice President, also no interest in business. Eric Collin, 18890, Carmel Crest Drive, Tarzana, California, 91356. Also Vice President, zero interest in business. Scott Roberts, 404 Dino Place, Rockville, Maryland, 20852. Secretary, with zero percent interest in business. George S. Chavel, 238 Ridgeview Drive, Venetia, Pennsylvania, 15367. Will be a Director with zero percent interest in business. Mark A. Glass, 12987 Buckeye Drive, Darnstown Avenue, 20888. Treasurer with zero percent interest in business. Michael P. Norris, 3240 Gulf of Mexico Drive, B207 Longboat Key, Florida, 34228. Director with zero percent business interest. Sodexo Operations LLC, 9801 Washington Boulevard, 12th floor, Gathersburg, Maryland, 20878. Will be a shareholder, over 49% of the interest in business. And then Magic Food Provision LLC, 9100 Wilshire Boulevard, Suite 710, East Tower. Where's East Tower? California, 90212. Stockholder, Stockholder with 51% interest in business. We have here Councilwoman Rich Nasbitt, this one. Council, who's with you?
Mrs. Martino.
On site, I'm at here. Something, I said. Martino Nasbitt, yes, this one, right here. Ooh, say. All right. Members of the board, this is a application for a person-to-person transfer to establishments located at Terminal A. Correct? What, what kind of business is it?
It's a service company, so we operate on site, remember, service for United Airlines.
United Airlines, yes, sir. Service in clients or outside of the?
VIP guest, they come in for their beverages and snacks, but apart.
So the VIP lounge, other than their VIP members.
This chairman never came out of here, or is saying, oh, sorry.
You're going to run the food and beverage services for the VIP lounge of United Airlines?
Correct.
Other than the food and beverages being served at the United Airlines VIP lounge, will it be served with anyone else in the public?
No, there's a concierge service that checks members in before they're allowed to enter the bar area.
And you will have bartenders who can scope whether the person is completely intoxicated or?
Correct, they're all not tipsy, but.
Do you have any other question? Question? So other than the VIP lounges, will there be any other services?
I think it's first place for the first class passengers.
First class passengers?
It's the first class passenger coming out of Terminal A. It would be a big game.
They don't pay, they may delay.
Exactly. I got a hot seat, so.
All right, can I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Councilman Mazza, second. Second, Councilman Torres. Vocal, please. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal. Aye. The vice, the motion passes, the next one.
Thank you very much.
So the last address to the board is East Tower, Beverly Hills, California. Council, application. All right, third order of business is an application for person-to-person transfer from OMBM Inc., trading as Continental Wine Liquors Planetary Retail Distribution License. Number 2004-44-028-011. City license D-25, located at 840 Elizabeth, New Jersey, 07202. To Usha Krishna LLC, trading as Planetary Retail Distribution License 2004-44-028-012. City license number D-25, located at 840 Elizabeth, New Jersey, 07202. Corporate structure is going to be Ravik Kira Hotel. You guys sit down, sir. You look like the Bible. Who's going to speak? He is, all right, the microphone's right in front of your person. I'm going to be, uh, corporate structure is as follows. Ravik Kira Hotel, 98B Baltimore Avenue, Scattaway, New Jersey, 08854. That's it. Manager, part of 34% of business and owner of 34 shares. Amrish Patel, 24 Sphere Street, Scattaway, New Jersey, 08854. Manager, part of 33% of business and owns 33 shares. And AJ Patel, 3 Appleway, Scattaway, New Jersey, 08854. Manager, part of 33% of business, owning 33 shares of stock. And Councilman Mahesh. Why don't you set the microphone there for yourself and answer your prayers.
Kunal Shah, K-U-N-A-L, and is S-H-A-H, on behalf of Usha Krishna LLC.
Councilman Mazza, is he still with you?
Yes, Mr. President.
Before yours, sir, is there any questions?
Mr. President, I review the applications. I only have two things to advise on the new owner. I wish you good luck for the future, but there are a few things you must do. Number one, I need you to keep the outside premises clean. Number two, no loitering in front of the license premises. Currently, we also have two negative things that the establishment has. And I'd like to see them to be cleaned up, wanted to go inside. I think it's a good business, so I wish you good luck with it. If any other member had any other question, you could ask.
I'm sorry, you can just be the second one, I have to catch that.
Second one is no loitering in front of the premises. People loitering drinking beers or little bottles of liquor or whatever. Another kind of media customers, but I don't like to see that in my area.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you understand?
Yes.
Number one, you got to keep the outside clean, okay? So what time do you go? Nine o'clock morning, nine o'clock morning, I'll be asleep, asleep. Then you do it at least two hours later, maybe two hours, make sure it's clean. And then make sure nobody's handing out. The councilor made a lot of complaints about that. If it becomes a problem, you're going to have to break that and issue a violation. Understand? Is there any other questions from any of you? All right. I hope that you wrap up your questionnaire, it seems like you guys have experience in the food store business. So you probably know what you're doing. One of the things that we do, if one of you thought of you, is that we cannot take someone to mind with my. We will check with that, right, okay? Previous owner to you knows that, okay? So if you don't take that lightly, you better have some way, a system of mind being everybody. Because first offense might give you breaks, second offense, too bad. You understand?
Yes.
All three of you guys, yes. The other thing you got to understand, we have had issues in the past where continental liquors is sold on liquor to other bars or in the area. You cannot deny, you're not a distributor. You can only sell to regular folks, okay? You cannot sell to another licensed establishment. You understand? All right, can I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Councilman Mazza, second, seconded by Councilman Torres. Vocal, please. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
All right, everybody, congratulations. Want to stick around with you when I just talk? Next order of business is a disclaimer here for JS Liquors Inc., trading as Arena Liquors. License, city license number is 2004-44-062-010. City license number D-24. The respondent is JS Liquors Inc., trading as Arena Liquors, 266 Morris Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey, 07208. Advise you that the following charges have been referred against you on July 12, 2013, purchase or taken alcohol beverages from a prohibited source, enabling continental distribution. Correct? Uh, violation of JAC 13 College 2-23.12. Open Brent C, small A, close Brent C's, or open Brent C, small B, close Brent C's. Councilor, please.
Any conditions, I want to know if you have any, do you have JS liquor, please?
I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Andrew regarding the charges. My understanding, there's going to be non-hold plea to the charge of selling, purchasing from prohibited source. Uh, this was one where they sold to, they purchased from continental liquors. About 200 cases of beer, and the police were able to see that and, and charge and confiscate all that. So they lost all that inventory, but it's a 10-day suspension, a 2-day credit for non-hold plea. Total of eight days, and since we will be transferred, we are agreed to hold in the balance for six months to eight days. It's the recommendation. This is, uh? First offense. First offense, Council, coincidentally, this is your board? Yes. Are you aware of the offer and the arrangement that's being put forth? I am, um, I guess my only question is, when, when the purchase occurred, it was found out the same day? Were they? Yeah, what happened was, the police saw a loading from a white van casing the beer. And they know that that wasn't a distributor, so that's how they saw it. Yeah, I'm, I'm, same day, I'm okay with that, I'm not saying the arrangement. All right, so my question is, sir, you're going to be out of business? Yourself, next application, you're going to be self, is that correct?
No.
All right, can I have a motion on the, on the plea arrangement?
Motion, Mr. President.
Second. Motion by Councilman Mazza, seconded by Councilman Sedano, vocal. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal.
Aye.
Now, the next item is an application for place-to-place transfer from JS Liquors Inc., trading as Arena Liquors, Planetary Retail Distribution License 2004-44-062-10. City license number D-24, located at 266 Morris Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey. You're going to move this location, same owner, same license to, uh, I'm sorry, license number now be, uh, 011. And the new location will be 416 Morris Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Same, Harting, 121 Jefferson Street, Conduction, New Jersey, GO 880. Where's all the ads? President, Stockholder, Secretary, Director, 100% business owned, 100% shares. And that's you. All right, so where is 416 Morris Avenue? Is that still your working house? It is, it's right in the corner of Orchard and Morris Avenue. All right. So, do you have any questions? I, I do, um, I guess my nature is more of a comment. Um, I know the new location has a parking lot to right in the corner. My greatest concern is simply the potential water that could easily happen there because of the space that you have in front of the location. Um, and also just the garbage that I could envision can easily, easily accumulate just because of that area. Um, so just really a word of encouragement, if you could really do your best to look out for that. Um, and of course, previously there was that issue. Learn the lesson and move forward, but congratulations on the new location. All right, so like I said to the previous applicant, Mr. Harting, what time do you want to make your story?
Kind of.
First thing you're going to do is do what? Clean the sideline, okay? You're going to do that a couple times throughout the day, okay? And before you close down, you're going to do the same thing, okay? Um, not going to let people hang out in front of your place. And you definitely not going to blow the beer in white vans, correct? Okay. You wouldn't blow it out of there, right? Uh, is there a motion? Motion. Second. Councilman Mazza made a motion, Councilman Sedano second, and vocal, please. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal. Aye. Look, I want to see you again, sir, maybe. Be so nice. Next order of business, renewal of inactive pocket license for 2013-2014 license term. Carlos Castro Maurice, who's that Carlos Maurice, yes. That's the one that I met, okay. Inactive, inactive pocket retail consumption license 2004-33-173-012. City license number C-28, with mailing address at 325 East Westfield Avenue, Rosa Park, New Jersey. 0744. This license was originally signed at 88 Jefferson Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Licensee has paid the 2013-2014 annual fee, tax clear certificate was received. Special ruling was received from the Director of State, ABC Pursuit, NJSA 33:1-12.39, where he got relief for the 2013-2014 license term. If the license became inactive on or before June 30, 2011, the local issue authority rule not have jurisdiction to renew the inactive license for 2013-2014 license term unless we first obtain a special ruling from the Director that you have received, is that correct? For now, it's still an inactive license, and I'd like to have a vocal, I mean, a motion.
Is the President questioning for a motion?
Yeah.
How long would an active license go on when you dispense this, you know, inactive for many, many years? That I recall personally. And how does somebody discover that this license existed on most of the San Francisco's of the Mercedes-Benz District, it's in the same building. One enters from East Jersey, the other one, I guess, from Jefferson Avenue. But how long will this be going to act?
Well, the licenseee has to get a special ruling from the Director, and I think there are reasons why. My understanding is it's going to be an application for a transfer, next one that I'm coming forward with the board to activate the license. Place-to-place transfer, you're putting it on, for another one or so.
So there's not going to be a margin of silence?
Yeah. That's, that's, I don't, I'm going to have to sound with that, that reason means why the Director gave the other, another exception.
Can I, this is appropriate, I make a motion to remove.
Motion by Councilman Mazza, is there a second? Second. Vocal. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano.
Aye.
Councilmember Massa.
Aye.
President, vocal. Aye. I have said, a renewal of planetary retail consumption license for the year beginning July 1, 2013. Expires on June 30, 2014. Applications and fees for renewal of planetary retail consumption license filed with City Clerk for consideration approved for renewal of the license here beginning July 1, 2013, expires June 30, 2014. Uh, the following licenses, the only one, so any conditions imposed on this license during the 2012-2013 license term shall be the same for 2013-2014 license term. And that would be license at 2000, uh, number 2004-36-166-008. zero eight. Located at nine oh one Spring Street LLC, which is the Crown Plaza Hotel, and that's it, same address, nine oh one Spring Street, uh, Elizabethan, Jersey. They brought all their, uh, requirements, ensure compliance. Is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Councilman Mazza, is there a second? Second, come here. Councilman Gonzalez, vocal, please. Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sedano?
Aye.
Councilmember Mazza?
Aye.
President, vocal. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? See you now, our next meeting will be Monday, November twenty-fifth, seven thirty PM. I'll ask for a motion, so turn it.
Okay.
So, motion.